How are you Herb?
Good man, how are you?
Good, you're going beyond the call of duty with this one, learning how to host a Zoom meeting.
It's no big deal.
Is it easy? I can see we have a someone named Sandra and Renee.
They haven't done video yet, so they're they're they've been admitted.
They're there.
Yeah, Jim Barron's just been admitted, so I'm admitting.
Okay, fantastic. How are you doing Herb?
Fine man, how are you?
Yeah, pretty good, very, very, very busy, just got done with a project that I began in early June. And I submitted my final report today, I was evaluating a law office at the University of Florida.
Yeah.
More than a hundred, me and my colleagues spent easily well over 200 hours between us, it was really intense. Eighteen drafts.
That's nothing.
Sixty-two page document. We had thirty-nine interviews, thousands of pages to read.
Well, I'm sure I'm sure it's much appreciated and well paid.
Yeah, well, much appreciated for sure, not sure about the well paid part. We decided if we're gonna do it again, we're gonna double our fee.
I've got I've got a bunch of people admitted, I'll keep I'll keep admitting them and then we'll.
No, we don't have Jeff here yet, so we don't have Quorum.
Yeah, no.
It's six fifty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, we got two minutes.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you Herb, I just, my computer is just so old.
Well, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this on an iPhone.
I know, I know, I've done it once on iPhone and it was ridiculous.
No, you can't do it, it's hard.
Plus, I need the phone to be available for other, you know, to see other things, other documents.
You know, I I got it, I got I got the same thing going here.
I mean, I get a computer, I got my computer on, the the, you know, the draft decisions there and I have a, you know, I have a hard copy of my my agenda and then I have, of course, I'm on the iPad, oh, by the way, you have the power, I don't know if you know how to do it. But you could actually change where it says iPad on my name, you could change it to my name if you want. I don't know how to do it, but I'm told every time I'm on, someone seems.
I'm sure I'm I'm I'll I'll do my best.
Yeah, you don't have to, don't worry about it. Sometimes it's better to be iPad.
I'm just gonna rename you, okay?
Yeah, rename it to Chuck, Chuck.
Yeah, you're 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 gonna be Chuck from now on, Chuck.
Yeah, good, good.
Chuck.
Yeah, C H U C K, there it is!
Done man, yeah, it just takes an expert to know how to do this.
That's great! Yeah. Every Tuesday night, not not now, but two weeks from now, I begin my Italian classes and I'm Carmelo there.
That's good man, that's good.
Yeah, I'm getting pretty proficient with it, twenty years.
We got seven PM according to my clock.
We still need to get Quorum and we don't have it.
We don't have it and some people are not on mic, some people are on video, we've got Renee, we've got Jane, Jane, Sandra, Joseph.
See Jim, Jane Urban.
You me. So I'm sure they'll chime in.
Yeah, they're silent right now, they're probably on here for the
Yes.
Agenda item number five, I imagine.
Yes.
Did you, are you wanting us to say hi?
Yeah, that would be great.
No, we're just we're just checking in to make sure that we've got the right people on board and you're connected and you can shut your mic off if you want.
Okay, great, thanks, yeah, I'm sort of just here to listen, but thank you.
Okay Jane, good to have you.
We're fine.
Good to have you onboard.
We're just waiting for Jeff Lacy.
So we can get the meeting going, as soon as he gets in.
Meeting going. What's our grace time, it's five minutes?
Yeah, you know, yes, exactly, and the clerk's reading, I forgot what that was, oh yeah, this is our conducted pursuant to the judge's order, to the governor's order. Issued and amended repeatedly, that's what I'll say, that's the clerk's reading, because now we don't have a clerk, so I have to substitute, I'm not a very good clerk.
But you can do the reading.
Yeah, the reading is is the best of my recollection is, we're here pursuant to because of virtual Zoom public hearings or remote hearings, pursuant to Governor Charles Baker's orders amended repeatedly, so that's what it is, I think.
Jeff's here.
Jeff? There is.
Jeff's coming.
Okay, we are, what time, where are we, we're at seven oh three, let me see, as soon as he's connecting to audio.
Yep.
Jeff, you're still muted. If you can unmute yourself, okay, I I have seven oh three PM on this Tuesday, September the seventh. We are here for a scheduled virtual Zoom public hearing and meeting. And I now call the meeting to order and I think it's officially seven oh three, call to order. This meeting is being held as a virtual Zoom public hearing and meeting pursuant to the order of Governor Charles Baker. Amended several times and still in effect due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we're unable to meet in person at the town hall. I, item number three on the agenda is the approval of the ZB A meeting minutes of July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. And as we know, we've had no clerk to help us with the minutes. In one of the first orders of business, when we do have a clerk, will be for the clerk and I to work on the minutes together. And present them, I understand that the open meeting law mandates that minutes need to be approved on the third meeting after, so we we could buy the third meeting after, so you know, we're still within next meeting, we can approve these minutes of July twenty-ninth and hopefully maybe even approve tonight's minutes. The next time we meet, so we're here for a continuation of a site plan review hearing concerning the application of Dean J. Jengron for the installation of a forty-panel ground-mounted solar array at two hundred and ninety-four West Calum Road. Including the installation of an eighteen kilowatt generic battery. Is anybody here with respect to that hearing, is anybody, can you unmute yourself if you're here for that purpose? No one's here for that purpose. Sandra, I I assume you're not here and Jane Urban, you're not here for that purpose? Fran Marigan, Renee Richard, Joseph's iPad and Jim, I assume that's Jim Barron. I assume none of you are here for that purpose, is that correct?
Well, I can speak for myself, this is Renee, I am here for that purpose, just to listen, to hear about what is happening with our bylaws and to hear about this project.
Okay, well, thank you Renee, but it seems like the applicant's not here for some reason. Which is problematic. Although I don't think the applicant has to be here, so I I think we can proceed.
They don't.
So let's let's just proceed without the applicant, I don't think there's a problem, so I I see we have here, and I have it up on my screen on the computer, Jeff. Thank you very much for your efforts of drafting the draft decision and to whatever extent you played. Herb Gilmore, thank you very much for whatever role you played too, and at least in your attempts to work with Jeff on this. Okay, so we have it in front of us, Jeff, do you wanna go over it, would you like to do that briefly?
Sure, could Herb give me permission to share, share a screen and I can put it up?
Yeah, I'm looking for it here, but if you've got it right there, put it up.
Okay. Host disabled, all right, so I I I need for you to somehow give me permission to put it up, or if you have a copy up, then you could put yours up, because I'm assuming you have permission to share.
Uh, yes, let me just look for it here.
There's two versions, the annotated one is for.
Right, 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 right. Uh, let me look here, this may be it. No. Can you see that?
Um, no, it hasn't been shared yet, so there would be a green button down below.
Yeah, I know, I know that, I know that, I just thought I hit it already. Share screen, which I did. Files.
Hmm.
There is.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, 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 I'm looking to get the shared meetings off of my computer, just a second.
Nice.
Wow, beautiful.
I wanna go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so you know, it would be important to know for the next time that we do this that sharing a screen is part of process.
It certainly could be.
Yeah, well, it's nice to know ahead of time, because I certainly wasn't told this by the clerk, but I was preparing to do this, thinking I could do it. And I'll go back to the screen and try to share again. So it'll only let me share certain things, it's not gonna let me share this, which is where I have it. I have a download of this.
I think we we could do it the old-fashioned way if necessary.
Well, I'm just saying, I have a copy of it in front of me and.
Yeah, I have a copy in front of me too, I think it's for anybody here that is very interested in it, but.
All I can say is that I'm clicking share a screen and I'm going to what it allows me to go to and it doesn't let me go to, oh, here we go, wait a second.
Oh, there it is.
That's very tricky. Okay, I'm I'm gonna definitely be talking to the clerk about more detailed instructions about.
Well, that's, well, at least.
Anyway, here we go.
Okay, so let me just run you through it, this is, this this whole thing is very simple and it's it's very much like other decisions we've made in the past when there, the ground-mounted solar has been non-controversial and inconspicuous and perfectly within the guidelines, so it, up in the beginning, it just lists the applicant, lists all the dates of the meeting, decision date would be tonight and the transmit date I usually put for the next day, Chuck.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, that's what I always do, and then the property information is taken right from the application. The request is also almost always verbatim, pretty much verbatim, I might have added a word or two, pretty much verbatim from their application.
Yep.
And then whatever plans that they submit, they submitted a site plan, they submitted a plot plan and then they had a whole bunch of pages of of building plans, so I listed all of them. And then, you know, the the next two things are the real crux of it, the findings that we made. And let me see, a little small, we found we found that if the requirements of eight point ten two A, which is the solar section of our bylaw relating to these types of projects. That the those requirements were met, because that says that if you have just a residential one, it goes by site plan review from the ZB A. So that's indeed what this project is, and then there's review criteria for the site plans, which is nine point two dash two A to L. And those are also met, and and what it says, due to the nature of the proposal and due to the proposed location, well to the rear of the property that is inconspicuous from the roadway or neighboring property. And that's really what we do when we go out and look at these things, we 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 wanna make sure they're not in anybody's face, either from the road or neighboring properties, and that's the case here, then I list what I believe the votes will be. And then next come the conditions, one through four, these were all talked about at our last meeting, the chair relayed them to me and I I put them in here, pretty much as he gave them to me.
Jeff, I'm just gonna take one L on Gilmore.
Oh, sorry about that.
No problem.
Thank you, Brett.
Got it.
Okay, yeah, that's like taking the E out of my name, I always do that. So so conditions one through four are are listed. Prior discussion of the installation plans with the Shu Spray Fire Chief. Installation plans must be submitted to the wiring inspector official for review and approval prior installation. Installation must be done according to the plans submitted to the zoning board of appeals, that's standard. Then installation must be according to manufacturer's instructions and national fire protection standards, so those are the four. The next stuff, the next two paragraphs are boilerplate, we have it in all of them, and then the the rest of it is just where the where the chair transmits it to the town clerk, lists the date, signs, prints, title. And then the town clerk hangs on to it for twenty days and if there's been no appeal with town clerk sign, puts a town seal and it's done.
Okay, we had preliminary discussions at our last meeting, we discussed this, and so and it seems, other than than the misspelling of Herb Gilmore's name and perhaps Jeff, you could correct that or someone can correct that and send the whole corrected document to me and I could, tomorrow I can print it out and I can sign it and date it tomorrow with my title. Assuming that we assuming that I here have a motion to approve this, is there a motion to approve this permit? Site plan review decision.
I move to do that.
Okay, Herb Gilmore moves to approve as amended, correcting only the spelling of Herb Gilmore's last name, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question and let me start with Herb Gilmore. Herb Gilmore, what say you on this, on this application, the site plan review decision?
Hi.
Jeff Lacy, what say you on this application for a site plan review decision?
Hi.
Dr. Mari, what say you on this application for the site plan review decision, I say aye, the ayes have it, it's a unanimous decision. It's 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 passed, Jeff, please just amend it, maybe email it to me either tonight or tomorrow, I will print it, I will sign it and I will get it up to the town hall, okay?
Do that, okay.
Okay, fantastic, now, I I assume that we go on to number five on our agenda, continued discussion of an action plan including the planning board for a recommendation for zoning board bylaw change rate relevant to the Lake Wayola district, Jeff, please refresh my recollection if you can, I I think you were gonna have some discussions, I I think it was sometime past August thirteenth, or was it past September thirteenth? But you were gonna have some discussions with the planning board about seeing whether or not the planning board wanted to work together with the zoning board of appeals, to see, to have this, make perhaps to do some walkarounds on the lake district and to perhaps banter about bylaw proposal recommendations, you know, for changes, so so I guess I asked you the question, Jeff, is the have you had that discussion or is it premature, because I don't remember if you said August thirteenth or September thirteenth, I know September thirteenth hasn't come and gone.
Yeah, it'll have to be September thirteenth.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, tied up with solar project on the.
Okay, so so I I think that in terms of the discussion between at least among ourselves, I I'm not sure what, there's more to say, but I do see that we have a number of people here. Citizens are here and if any citizens are here that wanna help inform us as a ZB A or guide us or state any opinions you may have, you know, we'll hear you now, if anybody wants to speak from the audience, please unmute yourself and the first one I see doing that, I will let speak. I have one, two, three, four, five, six people, I don't know if any of you are here for that purpose, but if you are. I see Joseph's iPad, can you identify yourself, Joseph's iPad?
Hi everybody, how you doing? I have a quick thing I wanted to ask the board while I'm on, how about increasing? I don't know, I don't know how to change the picture on it, but.
Hold on, hold on, can you can you identify yourself to somebody who you are?
I'm Joe Salvador.
Yeah, Joe Salvador, okay, go ahead Joe, I'm sorry I interrupted you, go ahead.
I've been listening to a lot of meetings from the board and I found one thing that I I wanted to ask the board is any chance of increasing the members of the board, so it makes it a little easier for you guys, because right now you guys have a three-member board, which has to be unanimous.
Well, I will say this, is that a recommendation that I have for a bylaw change would be just that, I know that Andy Bird, before he stepped down, he thought, he strongly believed that that should happen too, and and again, this is one of the things I would want to discuss with the planning board, but but I must say this. We have three members now and for the last several years, we've had three members in an alternate. And I'm in my twenty-sixth year on this board and and I don't, I think maybe a few times, we were lucky enough to have three members in two alternates. So part of the problem we have about making it a five-person board, which I strongly favor, is is getting people to step up, to wanna even serve, so. It's been difficult, go ahead.
After listening to the board, I think maybe what turns off some of the people from wanting to be on the board is the fact that it has to be unanimous. I think by having more people on the board, you can get a better understanding from different people of what they agree or disagree on, because the town is still growing and I think we're at a point that a lot of other towns have more than three people, that I looked at when some of the surrounding towns, that I think it would be a good, and it gets them involved. I just, I think instead of worrying about heights of houses right now and trying to reinvent the wheel, I think you guys need help and having more people on your board would help make those decisions later on.
Well, as to me, you're speaking to the converted already, because I.
What do you need the town people to do to make that happen?
Well, you know, some of the things that have been tried in the past, as you know, we have a newsletter, it's often, and I have seen it in the newsletter from time to time. Asking for volunteers to step forward, those of you who are here right now who have an interest, you could step forward, you could present yourself to the town administrator, Becky Torres, or you could show up at a select persons meeting and state that you're interested, I mean, that would be very helpful, or if you know people who are interested, you could say that too, I think, Jeff, do you have something to say, I see your pencil.
I mean, if if we wanna change from a three-member to a five-member board, we have to amend the zoning bylaw at point three, point one, establish it. Because that says three members and two alternates, so that's that's what we're permitted to have right now.
Correct.
But how do we, how do we amend it, that's what I'm asking, what do what do the people right now need to do to amend that rule?
These should come up at town meeting, you know, these are, you know, it'd be great if we can have a discussion with the planning board, but normally, these these are recommendations to the town meeting and for a bylaw change and of course, if there was consensus between the planning board and the zoning board, there's a high probability that it would happen, but, you know, so that's the first thing, to see if we can get consensus.
So if we start a petition to increase the board, would that help you?
I mean, it it can get it on the agenda maybe, I don't know, I'll ask someone else, Jeff, you wanna speak on that?
Certain number of signatures can get a measure on the town town meeting, it's not that many signatures really, and you have to present that, I believe, to the select board and then they refer that proposal to the planning board, the planning board has a public hearing on it, and then and then I believe, I I believe it has to go to town meeting, the planning board makes a recommendation, so it's it's not that hard to get it on the town meeting warrant.
So you just, see, you just get a, you have to get paperwork in the town hall and they will, sorry about my dog. They will give me the paperwork or give somebody the paperwork in order to help help you guys out with more people?
Yeah, the town court should help you and and all it has to say is something to the effect of, to see if the town will vote to amend section ten point three dash one to to strike three and replace it with five, you know.
Right, I just think at this point, maybe, and also maybe at the same time, letting some people who live on the lake on those committees, because a lot of the decisions that are being made affect people that live in the LW zoning. Um, zoning, so may help them out, having more people and having a diverse group. From different locations in the town.
I agree with you.
Well, we'll work on it.
Okay.
You hear that, everybody?
Thank you very much for your, for your, uh, your counsel and your thoughts. And does anybody else wanna speak, uh, this evening? I see, uh, someone else joining us, LS, whoever LS is. Or Jane, or Sandra's iPad, Jim Barron, if you're here, Renee, Richard, if you wanna speak, any of you? Yeah, I don't see, oh, go ahead, Jane, go ahead, Jane.
Okay, I, and I'm not sure if this is an appropriate question, and if it's not, you, I just tell me and. Or, or maybe you could point me in the direction, cause I know I'm coming to this kind of late, I, obviously, if you're having a final vote. On the, the thing that you guys just voted on, um, and passed, um. Uh, you know, I should have come a couple of meetings earlier to hear a little bit more about what exactly. As the zoning board, what were you looking at, the, the application that you just read didn't tell me a whole lot about what. Um, other than that, everything that the application met the criteria. So I, it, is there any way in like a nutshell, you can explain what exactly you were looking for and how? I mean, it, to me, not knowing anything, it's like there is this parcel. Of however many acres, and it's now gonna get the solar, or you at least have approved of the request to put the solar panels. What all were you looking at? Yeah, thanks.
Jeff, Jeff is gonna, uh, will speak to that, okay? And I, I do wanna say this preliminarily, the, the planning board has jurisdiction over commercial solar systems. Solar arrays, and the zoning board has, uh, jurisdiction over, uh, residential, this was a residential. Ground-mounted residential solar array, um, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
So Jane, um, this was a, uh, a ground-mounted solar, small solar array for residential use. In the back of somebody's home, um, off of West Pellam Road, way back off the street. Um, pretty much invisible from the neighbors, invisible from the road, and just behind their house. So instead of it being on the roof, it's ground-mounted, um, up on poles, um. So we, uh, just to provide power for that house. And those, um, a- as long as they're inconspicuous, they're very easy to approve. And you, you, you know, really, we, we, we go through, uh, criteria at nine point two dash two A through L. In our, our zoning, and we, we run through those and it meets all those. Um, you know, it's not in anybody's space, and that's really all we're, all we're looking for in this case.
Okay, okay, so, so this was the private, not the commercial.
Yeah, this is a big, this is not the big solar farm, this is, you know, this is twenty feet by forty feet or something.
Okay.
It was very non-controversial.
Okay, well, no, I was just kinda curious as I saw it, and I thought, um. Yeah, thank you very much, you absolutely answered my question.
Okay, anybody else wanna speak on, on that or? Uh, this issue about, uh, discussions of, um, changing zoning bylaws, anybody here? Again, I'll call on Jim or LS, whoever LS is, or Megan. Hi, Megan, I see you're here, Joe, uh, Joe, you've already spoken, Megan, you wanna speak?
Sure, I mean, I think, uh, um, I think the purpose for some of the folks around the lake that are on the call is just so we're. Aware of what you're proposing and just wanna make sure that there's, um, you know, sufficient. Canvassing of the, of the Lake Wyola, you know, constituents, so to speak, just so everyone's on the same page.
Yep, yep, I hope so.
That's all, I think that's the purpose for most of us.
Yeah, okay, um, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna take this one step at a time, uh. And, and hopefully, uh, next meeting will occur sometime after Jeff has an opportunity to talk to the planning board, Jeff is a liaison. Uh, Jeff is a member of both the planning board and the zoning board, and he's the official liaison between both boards. So hopefully he'll have some, uh, opportunity to discuss, uh, some lake issues and zoning bylaw change issues with them, and maybe. Uh, he'll give us some good news that they do wanna work with the zoning board to see if we could. Uh, come up with a action plan, and obviously, uh, uh, stuff with any action plan is making sure that. Uh, especially citizens at, 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 at the lake district, which will be affected the most. Uh, 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 are aware of what's going on and have an opportunity to be heard, or could, you know, uh. Uh, give us their thoughts about this, and again, as Jeff said, bylaw change of this nature ultimately. Occurs at a town, a town meeting, and, you know, the changes are easier if there's a, you know, joint. Uh, recommendation, unanimous decision by both boards, but again, all we're doing now is to see if the boards wanna talk to each other about this. Okay, I think, uh, I, I do agree though, and I'm glad that, uh, it was raised earlier tonight, this, this issue of the. Of a five-person board is also something that I know I would like to recommend, uh, as well. Okay, uh, having said that, does anybody else wanna speak, or Megan, you wanna still speak?
No, all good, thank you.
Okay, uh, we're going back to Renee, Richard, we're going to LS. Uh, we're going to Jim, none of the three of you have spoken yet, do any of you care to speak? Okay, uh, I'm gonna, hearing that no one, none of you care to speak, I'm gonna go on. To the next agenda item, which is, uh, education guidance, is anybody here this evening? Uh, for education and guidance on any zoning issue, so some pending project. Again, I, I see Renee, Richard, I see, uh, Joseph's iPad, Megan M., LS. Jane or Jim, are you here, the, any of you wanna be educated or guided? On anything related to the zoning bylaws of the town of Shute's Berry? Okay, haven't seen none, normally we do this in person, and there are people out in the hall, and they come in and they talk to us. Alright, new business, uh, has to do with, uh, the hiring process of the. Um, third Shute's Berry land use clerk, and. Uh, I, I'll say this, the search committee, uh, is, is myself, uh. Uh, as chair of the zoning board, is also Deacon Bonner, the chair of the planning committee. And, uh, Marion Defont, who's the chair of the conservation committee, the three of us have met. Um, a couple of times, wants to go through resumes and, and, and. And put the applicants down to two, we viewed two applicants. And we interviewed two applicants, we, we, we're all, three of us unanimously excited by one particular applicant. An offer was made to the applicant, I thought he was very highly qualified, and. Haven't thought about it, he refused the, the position, so that's not gonna happen. We went to the second choice, which we were also very excited about. And, um, that person wants until today to transmit to, uh, Becky Torres. Uh, you know, whether or not she's interested in the position, so I'm sure we're gonna hear from Becky tomorrow. And if she's not interested in the position, uh, we'll have the, the search committee, which is again the three chairs and Becky Torres will. Meet again to decide what we're gonna do, we still have two other applicants, and, and, and perhaps we'll choose one of them, we'll see. And, um, or reopen the search, I'm not sure what we'll do, and I don't wanna prejudge that. Without hearing from my colleagues on the search committee, but that's what's going on there. Is there any other new business, uh, to attend to, um, Herb Gilmore or Jeff Lacy, do you have any other new business? Okay, I hear silence there. Um, the next order of business on item number eight is old business. Of course, uh, we have discussed already, uh, item number five, which is old business. And, uh, is there, is there any other old business? Okay, uh, I'm, I'm hearing, uh, no one talk, wants to talk about any other old business. So, item number nine is scheduling the next Z B A meeting or site inspections, um, I think, um. Uh, there's no business before the board right now, other than my transmitting of the. Uh, amended site plan review decision that we just passed this evening to the town clerk, after that, there is really no business. Um, business will come from time to time, uh. Go weeks, sometimes months before we have business, but I think the next order of business is to hear back, and, and perhaps Jeff. And I can have a communication, uh, after Jeff meets with the planning board and discusses this to see if, uh. Uh, we should put this, this item on the agenda and have another meeting, the next meeting, though, we will have to approve the minutes of July twenty ninth, so. You know, I, I hope we can have a land use clerk before we get to that next meeting, so we'll find out, uh, if not, I, I, uh. If there's a meeting before we hire a land use clerk, I will do the best I can. Uh, to reconstruct the minutes, uh, I do have the agenda, so it's pretty easy to reconstruct, the only real issue that I see. Is, uh, I don't have, cause I don't have access to the tapes, I don't have. Who everyone was at that meeting on July twenty nine. Uh, normally, our land use clerk would just, you know, go back to it and just write them, those names down, I, I don't know if that's. Critical and essential, I think, from my perspective, what's most critical. And essential is, is, is grabbing the gist of, of the meetings, and not necessarily who attended. Uh, I do know that these tapes are available for, for a while, so if someone really wants. The meeting of July twenty ninth, uh, they can get it. And that goes for the meeting, uh, this night's meeting, which is September the seventh. And I see that I'm getting really dark, cause the sun is setting up here, and, alright, so we will, uh. We will go to, uh, I take it, both Herb and Jeff, that we don't wanna schedule anything more right now, is that correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay, now Herb, uh, can you remind me of, uh, there are times that you're gonna go away, I don't know when, but can you? Let me know when that is, is it?
Yeah, I'll let you know, it's, it's gonna be for a week in the next.
Okay, alright, so I'm, I'm not gonna worry about that.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, fantastic.
I'm away, I'm away from the twenty-second to the twenty-eighth of this month.
Okay, okay, alright, so, you, you know, a few days a week, you know. As long as you, you're gonna, looking at, you'll be looking at your emails if I email you about meetings, right, obviously.
Yeah, the only thing would be, uh, you know, from the, from next weekend to the week after, I'll be kind of. Maybe have some connection, maybe not.
Okay, you know, normally, when I get an application, it, it takes me, you know, several days to. Work it out with the applicant as to their availability, so, you know. And I explain to the applicant, it usually takes me three or four days, or sometimes a couple of weeks thereafter to schedule a meeting, so. Uh, we'll be understanding.
Yeah, it shouldn't be more than a couple of days, they wouldn't be, be able to reach, or email.
But generally, uh, shall I assume, say, September fifteenth to October fifteenth? It, or September fifteenth to November first, n- neither one of you gonna go off for two weeks, is that fair to say?
Well, September fifteenth, I'm going off from this, from next weekend, uh, to, for a week.
For one week, but not for two weeks or more.
No, no, no.
Okay, good, great.
That will probably bleed into my time away too.
Right.
So if, if Herb has gone from the fifteenth, um, to around the twenty-second, the twenty seconds when I'm leaving.
Okay, that's for about a week, okay.
There's a two-week period from the fifteenth to the twenty-eighth, when one or both of them.
Okay, so, so what I will do, the best I can, if something comes to our attention, to delay meetings until October. With any reason, okay, I don't know that I have a choice with a three-person board. Okay, um, alright, so I have, uh, well, make it official seven thirty-nine, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Uh, Jeff Lacy moves to adjourn, adjourn the meeting, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, the law requires me to pull you, what say you, Jeff Lacy, about adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
What say you, Herb Gilmore, about adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
What say you, Chuck Damari, about adjourning the meeting? Aye, the meeting is hereby adjourned officially at seven forty. Bye, everyone.
Right, bye.
Thank you, bye-bye.